Okay, we're back with the Sheriff's Department and we're going to hear from our Sheriff, from Sheriff Kogen with his presentation at this time, whenever you're ready.
So, good evening Chair McCray and Council President Cohen and esteemed members of the council. I'm Sam Kogan, the Sheriff of Baltimore. I'd like to just begin briefly by taking a moment of silence for Assistant Sheriff Lenora Dawson, who passed away on April 24th. Thank you. We're holding a memorial service for her this Saturday and I know we've invited everyone. So, I'm pleased to stand before this council to talk about the vital work being done by the men and women of the Baltimore Sheriff's Office. And I want to start by saying, an active sheriff's office and an activated sheriff's office that's out in the community is not only providing courthouse security, but adding value to public safety across the city of Baltimore. And when I was elected in 2022, I promised the people of Baltimore that it would maximize the authority of the sheriff's office to directly benefit their communities. And I promised to emphasize training and professionalism, and also promised to use technology to create efficiencies in the delivery of those services. In addition to evictions and courthouse security, my office serves peace and protective orders, warrants for persons who have violated probation, and apprehends violent fugitives. We provide security for the community fairs and festivals, we tow nuisance vehicles at the request of city residents, we work with an animal cruelty task force with the Health Department, and we have productive partnerships with other public safety organizations in the city and across the region. We can do all this because of the hard work and dedication of the sworn deputies, the women and men who reflected diversity of the city who we serve, and the majority of whom are city residents. However, we are doing all this with a serious lack of resources, which are both human resources and material. The number of court security officers was set back in the 1970s at a ratio of nearly three court security officers to every one judge. Back then, there were approximately 15 judges and there were 45 court security positions. Today, the total number of judges and magistrates has grown to 46 and we have only 35 court security positions. So, we now have fewer court security position pins than judges and magistrates. This leads us to backfilling the necessary court security functions with sworn deputies. So, now we have fewer deputies to do the necessary work of serving court notices, capturing dangerous fugitives, and doing the important work of protecting our community. We are currently carrying a vacancy rate of approximately 25%, and that is an untenable position to be in. We saw the video produced by the Chief Administrative Officer of the City, Faith Leach, and she said particularly in public safety, that overtime is necessary. And we would agree with her 100%. No matter the vacancy rate, papers must be served, the courthouse is and its surroundings be secured, and the public be protected. And while we're making every effort to recruit and retain, it is very difficult when our wage schedule is uncompetitive with other law enforcement in the city and in the region. Despite these challenges, I am very proud of the work that the deputies are doing, the court security officers are doing, and the civilian staff perform every day. They encounter people from the community every day and we adhere to the principles set forth in President Obama's 21st century policing model, which is positive interactions between law enforcement and the community based on respect and professionalism. Baltimore saw a huge reduction in crime in 2024 and the sheriff's office was a valuable partner in that effort. There were zero calls for 911 service at any of the community-based events where we provided security presence. It is not only important from a safety perspective, but it also impacts the morale of the community when we perform these community safety events, and we make people feel safe to go out in public spaces in Baltimore. I am proud to go to these events and see neighbors enjoying each other and seeing our teams taking pictures and having positive interactions with community members. It is my goal to increase services to the community with our new Neighborhood Services Unit that we announced last week. This unit will partner with the Liquor Board and the community at large to make sure that businesses in the community are acting as good corporate citizens. And while there is much work to be done, I sincerely believe that my team is up for the challenge, and I want to thank my team who's here today in support of our budget presentation. And I'm going to go to the slide presentation at this time. Okay, so the sheriff's mission is to provide law enforcement services to the city's district and circuit court, the citizens of Baltimore, and as it's required by the state constitution and the public and general local laws of the state of Maryland. So, our fiscal goals are, and they've continued to be, is to build trust and legitimacy for policy and oversight, for technology and social media, for community policing and crime reduction, for officer training and education, for officer safety and wellness, and expanding the services and the functions of the sheriff's office through community engagement and proactive enforcement in the city of Baltimore. Here's our organizational chart that you asked us to provide with phone numbers so you can get in touch with us. We also will send our email addresses around as well, if that would be helpful. So, we're going to look at our demographics a little bit. So, right now, and I just wanted to put this out, and it's actually a higher number, it's 66%. 66% of our employees live in the city of Baltimore, and that's something that we're very proud of. And if you look at our sworn members right now, we have 126 and our civilian members, we have 53. But we have 50 vacant positions right now, and that's reflecting a 24% vacancy rating. And I spoke before about why we think that vacancy rating is the way that it is. We're talking about partnerships. So, during the fiscal year, we have a partnership with all the entities you see up above, but we wanted to specifically highlight that we have a partnership with the Baltimore City Health Department to serve the animal control warrants. For a reason, the Law Department properly saw that the Police Department may not have had jurisdiction to serve the civil warrants, but the sheriff's office does. And so, we're serving the animal control warrants to assist in that. If you saw, that was one of the big cases this year, where 86 dogs were seized that were being abused and were sent to parks. We have task forces with the Liquor Board under Neighborhood Services and other things. We have an agreement with the Baltimore City Department of Transportation and an MOU for illegally parked vehicles, and we have a towing program. We work with both the Baltimore City Circuit Court and District Court to do judicial threat investigations before that was done primarily or exclusively by the Baltimore City Police Department. Now, the sheriff's office does our own judicial threat investigations in partnership with other agencies and the city police department. We work with the Maryland Stadium Authority to work as special events assistants, and we worked at the Ravens this year. It was the first time that we were brought in to do that, and it was at the request of the Ravens for us to come in and assist them, because they needed help in securing the stadium. And we do enhanced traffic enforcement. So, those are just some of the partnerships that I'm highlighting. So, here's some of the outcomes. So, we served 86,535 failure to pay rent notices. And so, one of the reasons that I put this slide up here is because before, that information really wasn't available. We started keeping stats on eviction stats through computerization and technology. So, now we know that there was 86,535 failure to pay rent cases that were initiated in the city that went through the sheriff's office. And we charge a service fee on that. And this is something I want to talk about, is that the sheriff's office collects revenue, and you're not going to see anywhere in our budget, nor have you ever seen a revenue item line where you'd see on other things. So, for every summary judgment notice that we receive, there's a service fee of $5. And there's a surcharge fee of $10. And then, for every warrant of restitution issued, and that's when an actual eviction is filed and sent to the sheriff's office, there's a $40 fee, and then there's a surcharge of $10. And all those are remitted to the Director of Finance for a total of $2.9 million, right? Almost $3 million that the sheriff's office on these two filings submits to the Director of Finance every year. So, that's just for your information, although we don't see a revenue line item on our budget. We want to be transparent that we do bring in revenue, and this is just what some of the revenue is. This is a big deal, is the squatter cases, and I thought we might be asked this tonight, so we put this up. So, in Baltimore City, a wrongful detainer is filed against somebody who is not in a landlord-tenant relationship and is inside a property without permission of the owner. And most of the times, that's what we're going to call, like, we would deem that as a squatter case in most of these cases. So, in the city in 2024, there were 823 wrongful detainer squatter cases forwarded to the sheriff's office to take enforcement action on. Of those, we actually evicted 174 people that were in there, right? That were wrongfully detaining or squatting in the property. And we did evictions in 273 where they just weren't home at the time or moved before we got there. So, if you want to know what's happening with squatter cases in the city, 823 of them were addressed through the sheriff's office in 2024, through the wrongful detainer war. Community events. I talked about when I ran for office that we were going to go out into community and do community events. So, we did 231 community events in 2024 in 41 different neighborhoods citywide, and put over 1,100 personnel hours into that function. And when we talk about crime reduction by boots-on-the-ground and law enforcement officers, I think that we should add this into the equation as well. And during those 231 events in 41 different neighborhoods citywide, there was not one crime incident that was reported to us or that occurred during those events. Policy and oversight. So, we started out, and we've completely rewritten our general orders to national standards, which is the certification standards. And we've been implementing through our email database system where we send a policy to someone, they have to take a test on it, and then it goes into their permanent file. We've started doing that. Some of the policies we are also excited to implement is that we're looking at rental fraud. So, in those wrongful detainers, we're taking the names of the people who are wrongfully detaining the property, so they can, as a course of conduct, defraud landlords over and over and over again, so we can identify who those people are. And we're also looking at people who are filing with the court and lying and saying that they have rental licenses when they don't. And I know that was an issue for the council, and we're very, very strict on that. We have electronic filing now of evictions, and when we do so, we let them know, the landlords know, that it is actually a crime to defraud the sheriff's office and say you have a rental license when you do not have one. And it's perjury. They have to sign under the penalty of perjury to do that as well. We've done community-based traffic enforcement, where we have a portal on our website. People will talk about a problem area, you know, in their area where there's been a lot of accidents, and the sheriff's office will come out and they'll try to assist by doing traffic enforcement in that area. The other thing I want to talk about is body worn cameras. So, the sheriff's office has implemented body worn cameras, right? Deputies are in body worn cameras and they're in use as we speak. So, we're meeting the goal that we needed to, to be able to do that. But I want to talk specifically about that to say that we weren't funded in our budget last year, and we're not funded this year to implement body worn cameras, which is a state mandate. And again, I'm going to try to be very transparent in everything that we spent and everything that we did, so we can lay it out in dollars and cents, so that the council has a really good knowledge of what we're actually doing. And so, this was the cost of the cameras that we had to purchase, the software that we had to purchase, the subscriptions, the mobile reporting and storage, and then we're going to need staffing in order to review that footage. And none of this is budgeted, and we estimate that this is what the amount is going to be. The cameras are already purchased. We did that partially on our own through some drug forfeiture money we had, and also finding it within our budget. So, courthouse security division. We're going to talk a little bit about the sheriff's office, and we're presenting the budget in a way that doesn't, it sticks to the way finance is doing it, but we want to make sure that the council understands, right? The way the sheriff's office is laid out. And it's sort of laid out the way the fire department is laid out, where you have an EMS side, right? And you have a firefighter side, right? The sheriff's office has a court security division, which is enumerated in the public and local law, and we have a deputy sheriff division, which is enumerated in courts and judicial proceedings. And so, the court security division in the public and local laws, which is passed by the General Assembly, says that Division of Courthouse Security is created within the sheriff's office of Baltimore City. The sheriff of Baltimore City is the chief of courthouse security. And then it says, the salaries and personnel of the courthouse security division, together with the funds necessary to provide uniforms, equipment, supplies, and the general expenses, shall be included in the operating budget of the sheriff of Baltimore City as provided in the annual ordinance of estimates of the mayor and city council of Baltimore. So, these are the individuals that are providing security within the courthouse, and they are not deputy sheriffs. They're court security officers. This is what we were funded for this, which is the recommended budget, which is, you have the slide, for the service of courthouse security. And then, in order to be transparent, right? We wanted to show exactly what we're doing and how much this service actually costs, and how there's a deficit. And I talked about this last year, but I think this year we can, we broke it down in a much more transparent way. And there's a deficit of $6.5 million in what we actually spend on court security than what we're budgeted for. And so, we broke it down. There's 46 judges and magistrates, and it costs to provide the security for them for that one court security officer at $99,600 per judge, $4.6 million. The courthouse doors in the Mitchell courthouse, we calculated how many days the courthouse was closed and open to the public, and we created a manpower hours there, and we calculated at $50 an hour and came up with these amounts that are here for the Mitchell, for the Cummings, and for the Juvenile Justice Center. And that's for the screenings at these public buildings and working and staffing the doors of the historic buildings. Then we looked at what the canine unit costs, what the camera systems cost to watch, what the lockups cost. There's three lockups to staff. And then we looked at the additional rovers, facility security, people who walk around the building, people who fill in, and the various other facility securities, and came up with that. And so, we're looking at this deficit of $6.5 million. And I will stand here today and say that I know there's going to be questions about our overtime and about us going over budget, right? And pointing at this, right? This is the number one reason why that is occurring, is that we're backfilling from the deputy sheriff division into the court security division because there's an underfunding within the court security division of this amount of money. And it would be like if the fire department was taking the firefighters and putting them into the emergency, you know, emergency services, and then they still had the fire stuff to do on top of it, right? And you got to remember, and this is the way I'm breaking it out, is that we have a court security division and a deputy sheriff division. The court security division does court security. The deputies don't go into court security and do court security. That's not what we're, that's not what the state law intended, nor that's what the, or is it what the state law said? And that's why they're enumerated in different places. So, the deputy sheriff division, that's what we're going to talk about. And you should look at the deputy sheriff division as everything that's not court security, right? And deputy sheriffs have full law enforcement authority within the city of Baltimore to do law enforcement work. They have the same authority as the police department, but they also have the civil authority to seize property and serve process and act as the enforcement arm of the court. And they're enumerated, again, under courts and judicial proceedings, not in the public and local law. And so, there's three things that we do, and this is how the budget book will break it out. There's deputy sheriff enforcement, where we're talking about warrants and foreclosures and levies and different service of process and the various functions, and that's laid out this way. Then there's the service of peace and protective orders, which is also a deputy sheriff function, and that's funded and laid out this way. And then there's the district court sheriff services, and that's when we're talking about evictions and district court process and the service that we do for the district court, not including peace and protective orders. So, that's the deputy sheriff division, the not court security division. And then coming soon, the state has included a neighborhood service division, but that doesn't go into effect until October, so it's not addressed or funded in this budget. So, when we're talking about revenue collection, and I just wanted to touch on this again, and I thought it was important to put another slide, there's not, you don't see a revenue slide for the sheriff's office, but the sheriff's office collects significant amount of fees and revenue for the city. So, internally, which is when people wrote a check to the sheriff's office, we collected that 800,3390 number, right? And in eviction fees alone, $2.9 million in eviction fees alone that was remitted, right, to the city of Baltimore Director of Finance. And while we don't have a budget, like I said, all this was, you don't see any credit to the sheriff's office budget for this revenue that's been collected. And with that, I'm sure there are many questions, right? And I'll be willing to answer any of them.
Thank you for your presentation, Sheriff Kogen. We're going to be hearing from Council President Cohen first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Sheriff. Appreciate the team. Appreciate the work you all do for public safety in Baltimore. Know that you are a big part of the violent crime fight, and you own a part of why we are doing so well in reducing homicide and non-fatal shootings in our city. So, I appreciate you. A few things that I want to lift up that I appreciate that you do before I get to my questions. One, I know that from a trauma-informed lens, I appreciate that when you serve evictions, you bring a social worker with you.
Thank you.
That is new for the city of Baltimore, and that is important. I witnessed when I was an educator, an eviction of the family of one of my students, and it was one of the most traumatizing experiences for not only her, but her entire family that I've ever been witness to. And so, I appreciate the thoughtfulness there. Also appreciate how your sheriff's deputies engage with the public. You mentioned the number, 66%, I believe you said, live in the city.
Correct.
Often, I've witnessed a really positive dynamic in the deputies being able to deescalate issues before they start and before they get riled up. And I've always really appreciated that, whether it's in parks, whether it's at festivals, or whether it's in the neighborhood. And then finally, I do want to appreciate the work that you did alongside Delegate Smith, Senate President Ferguson, and partners in Annapolis, and the Liquor Board to create a partnership to address nuisance liquor stores and some of the activity that unfortunately we, in areas that have high concentrations of bars, that we often see. So, appreciate all of those things. I want to get specific, and you were sort of going there in your presentation. One of the predominant themes throughout this set of hearings has been about overtime spending.
Yes.
Vacancies, and then a frustration on this council that we are asked to approve supplemental budgets where vacancies that have not been filled are washed into overtime spending, and then the council is asked on the back end to approve a supplemental. What are you doing to curtail excessive overtime and to recruit and hire more sheriff's deputies so that you don't have all those vacancies within the agency?
Great. So, that's a great question. I'm going to start with the, first of all, thank you for everything that you said about the work that we're doing. I truly appreciate that we're appreciated like that, and people are understanding what we're doing to serve the community. I'm going to start with what are we doing to recruit deputies? And that is, right now, we're in collective bargaining with the city, and we're looking for a competitive salary for the deputies, right? You know, it would be my desire to look at something that is close to or equal to the Baltimore Police Department, what they make, right? But that's not what people are coming in at. But it needs to be competitive. And so, you know, I listened to the Police Department's budget presentation in front of you, and I saw that, and I look around the city and I see in all the signs and billboards during the Baltimore Police Department and the recruitment efforts that they're making, and that they have contracts and recruiters and advertising. Well, I just want to be clear, like, the deputy sheriffs are from that same pool that we're going to have to go for. And they go to the Baltimore City Police Academy, and they take the exact identical training that the Baltimore City Police Department has. And it's very difficult, and it's almost at the impossible level for me to recruit at the salary that we have right now, because it's significantly lower than the Police Department, the school police department, the MTA, the MDTA, right? And I'm not, this is not the administration's fault. This is just where we are after this sort of differential. And then we're looking at, are the sheriff's deputies doing more law enforcement work, which I think the answer is yes, that they are, and looking and trying to right-size their salaries so we can recruit. So, one of the things that we do to recruit, since we don't have that budget, is I talked about those festivals and events we go to. And one of the things that we do is we have a table at every event in the community, and we're looking to hire people at those events and festivals, and we talk about what we do, and we try to recruit that way. But again, it's, at the end of the day, a person's going to look at, can I be a Baltimore City police officer, or a Howard County Sheriff, or an Andorondo County Sheriff, or a school police officer, or can I be a deputy sheriff? And if they see the deputy sheriff's salary is so much lower than those other ones, it creates a real problem for me. But again, we're in bargaining, and so, I'm confident that we'll reach, you know, something that will fairly compensate the deputies, and that will assist on that. Overtime spending is problematic for us because we have that vacancy rate based on the low salaries, and recruiting people is difficult for the low salaries. So, to have a 25% vacancy rate, it's, in my opinion, it's because of the low salaries entirely. If we had a competitive salary, we would not have that vacancy rate. We would probably be full. And if we were full, and we had our 25% people, then we wouldn't have to spend overtime to do the stuff that we're doing, and we could do the activity we wanted to do. And what makes that worse then is what I talked about, having a funding deficiency in court security. So, deputy sheriffs that have citywide law enforcement are doing a job in the courthouse that a special police officer could do, because we just don't have the pins and funding to be able to do that. So, I appreciate the question and being able to talk about that, but that is the crux of the issue, is that issue right there.
I appreciate that. And, you know, it's active negotiation, so I don't want to get into a direct conversation about salary. What I will say, you know, as you witnessed, we had the Police Department in this chamber last night, and while it was a very positive conversation and hearing in many ways, they too have some real issues with overtime and recruitment. And the Commissioner is optimistic about their ability to significantly recruit and retain. The Chair and I expressed some skepticism, as we just haven't seen it over many years, but I hope to see it, and I need to see it in both agencies. And so, one thing I'm going to leave you with as a challenge, and then I just want to hear from my colleagues, is I really want to see some deeper engagement in our high schools, some pathways and apprenticeships. The mayor and I have been having some great conversations about career pipelines, and the fact that 66% of your workforce already lives in the city tells me that, in the way that sometimes the Police Department has had a challenge with perception, particularly among young people, that your agency may not have as much of that challenge. And so, what I would suggest is that you make an intentional effort to be in our schools, in our churches, in our community spaces, making sure you are bringing some of our best and brightest into the sheriff's office, because it is a good job and a good career, and we need to make sure more of our young people are, see themselves in it. Thank you, Mr. Sheriff, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Sheriff Kogan, as a quick follow-up, do you have any programs that are geared toward exposing youth, Baltimore City youth, to the Sheriff's Department?
We do. We have a cadet program. We actually have, I believe, four cadets right now that we're hiring at 18. We also have a community outreach program where we go into schools and talk about what we do. So, we do have that.
Is your cadet program, is it citywide? Is it focused on certain high schools, or...?
So, we're recruiting 18 to 21-year-olds, so it's after they graduate from high school. But, you know, it would be great to be directly into a school and have that school have a feeder career into the sheriff's office. That's something that we would love to have. And so, I'd love to work with the council or anyone to try to set something like that up. It's a great idea.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice President Middleton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to thank you for your service and the work that you and your team do, especially for the court system. And that's how I want to kind of lead into my questions. I know that all of the, you know, work that you do, it's like an enforcement arm of the court system. And you list that you do so, your staff does so many other things. I'd like you to talk about what your actual duties are.
Great. Perfect. I'm glad you asked that question, because for 33 years prior to me, the duties were the duties that the previous sheriff set, which were to sort of stay and be court enforcement arm-activated. But that's not what the authority of the sheriff's office is in its entirety. The sheriff's office has full jurisdiction in the city to engage the community and do community outreach. And the agenda of the sheriff's office is set by the voters. And so, when I ran for sheriff, I ran to tell the voters that I wanted to activate the ability of the sheriff's office to go out into the community and use the enforcement activity that we have to do community events and festivals, to do traffic enforcement, and to exercise those authorities and powers to assist in the crime fight in the city, so we can get to where we are right now, where we have a reduction in homicides and a reduction in crime, and we have an activated sheriff's office that is part of the public safety crime fight and that people are talking about. And so, the duties of the sheriff's office really are set by the agenda of the sheriff based on the based on the constitution and the authorities that we have. And we have a court security division, like I talked about, whose role is to be in the court and do court security, and we have the deputy sheriff division to do other things. And if you look at the state law that just passed, it says the sheriff shall have a neighborhood services unit that should work with the liquor board and also perform any other function that the sheriff directs. And so, that is the, you know, you see the different thing in Prince George's County, where it says the sheriff can only work in courts, it can only do transportation, and can only do these things. And what we had this time around is the State General Assembly unanimously pass a bill that says the sheriff can do other things in the neighborhood and do neighborhood services. So it's an affirmation, I think, of the direction that the sheriff's office is going in, and codifies in the state law that we have these common law authorities to do this. What the sheriff doesn't do is be the police department. The police department answers 911 calls, the police department does the detective work, the police department has what we call the general policing services in the city, but the sheriff's office has police powers, and they assist in the crime fight to do things. So while you'll see us do evictions, you got to remember the sheriff's office didn't do evictions until 2003. And when you see us doing domestic violence, the sheriff's office didn't do domestic violence until 2016. These were services that were picked up because the General Assembly codified it, and because we have the authority to do this, and because the sheriff's office can help out the city, and it's my opinion the sheriff's office should help out the city, all hands on deck, everything that we could do using all authority to help the community.
The council president had brought up and talked a little bit about overtime. Madam Chair, I have a committee request. I'd like, and I'd like this office to give us some documentation that is directly connecting their office duties to the overtime that they do. We need to see, you know, really hard, what is, what are you doing directly with what your main responsibilities are as far as the overtime is related? If you want to also respond to that question, even though we would like that documentation...
Yeah, absolutely. And so, on a daily basis, we're performing overtime to do what I think people would consider would be like court enforcement-related work and court security-related work. Like, for example, the, not to get too deep into it, because some of it is our security protocols, but we know, and I think the judiciary talked about it, they don't have a designated parking area. And so, in the morning, right, and the afternoon, because we're not funded to do this, the court security division has to put multiple deputies in the street to do patrol around the court facilities to make sure that the jurors who are coming in are safe and the judiciary is safe. That's an overtime detail that runs every day. The building is open 24/7, and so we have to have a physical presence in the building of deputy sheriffs, and we've had fires that have occurred at night, floods that have occurred at night, people vandalizing doors and whatnot. So that alone, that one function, to keep one person in there, costs almost a half a million dollars if you look at seven days a week, 365, right? And so, that's an expense. We have a judge that was severely threatened, and we had to put them under 24-hour, you know, protection. And that was two of those individuals, because we're not staffed, we're only staffed Monday through Friday, because that's the way the old sheriff would work mainly Monday through Friday, and now we're working seven days a week, right? That was mostly, that's going to have to happen on overtime. I can't tell you how many times my chief of security has had to respond down to the court facility because there's been a fire or flood, the doors have popped open, something has happened because it's a historic building, and then we've had to bring people down there to secure those things. So those are overtime things that we do. We also do some of the events and festivals on overtime. Some of them, like the Ravens was all done on overtime, but all that was reimbursed. You know, so there's things that we're doing like that on overtime. Some of the details that we do, there are traffic enforcement, since they occur in the evening, and the deputies work some of the regular shift, and then they go out and do that on overtime. Some of that is on overtime. And again, we're talking about backfilling with the vacant positions we have, that some of that is covered and some of that isn't.
Okay, so some of the things that you mentioned, as far as doing all these other things across the city, and in some of my records, I see that a lot of focus is downtown and in the South Baltimore area. What do, how do you determine what neighborhoods you select when you want to do all these outside things besides what your job is in that courthouse?
Right. So I would respectfully challenge that categorization that they're done in South Baltimore. They absolutely are not, and we'd be happy, I think it's probably a good idea, to dispel that as a rumor, right? To provide you, by councilmatic district, every neighborhood that we work in and what we do, because we've been incredibly intentional not to just do things in, and I think, you know, there's some malicious actors out there that would like to say we only do things in Fells Point and Federal Hill, and that is a complete falsehood. We do things in all areas of the city, right? And we make sure that we're intentionally serving all the communities in the city. So I'd love to present the information, you know, and highlight where we're working and provide each of you, right, in your neighborhood where we've actually done events and festivals to support your communities.
And that sounds like another committee request. Please give us a list of what you're doing and what you have done in each specific district. And I bring this up because, listening to you, it's almost like you're in competition with the Baltimore City Police Department. And what kind of relationship do you have with the Baltimore City Police Department?
Got you. Well, if that's how I'm being perceived by you, that's not how I'm trying to come, that's not how I'm trying to come across, because we absolutely are not the police department. The police department is the ones who are going to answer 911 calls and do detective work, and the sheriff's office is going to assist the community to do events and festivals, a lot of the ones where the police department can't do them, because they don't have the staffing. So a lot of times, Department of Transportation Special Events will call my office because they say the police department doesn't have the staffing to cover these events, and then we'll go out and cover them. So one of the ways we learn to staff events is, does the Department of Transportation for Baltimore City call us and ask us for their assistance? The other one is, Commissioner Worley calls me, right, and asks for assistance as well, and we have a wonderful relationship. I think he wouldn't categorize that I'm in competition with them, and I wouldn't categorize that I'm in competition with them. I think that we're in cooperation with each other to try to reduce crime in the city, and I'm really proud of that.
Can you tell me offhand what you do in District 6?
Some of the events that...
What have you done in District 6?
I can provide you with that. I can provide you specifically what we've done. For every event we do, we do an operational plan, how many people are staffed and where we are. And I'd be more than happy, I know we have it on a hotspot map of the entire city where we're doing stuff, but, you know, we have events and festivals that are down there and in every district we've done, like I said, I think it was like 41 neighborhoods.
I'd like to also see that connected in writing what has been done in connection with the Baltimore City Police Department.
Sure.
Per district.
We could do that.
Because it's in correlation with, is this taking away, you know, I'd like to see if, is this taking away the responsibilities that are at the top of the list with, and that's working in that courthouse?
Well, unfortunately, right, I'm going to have to disagree with you, right? That the top of the list isn't working within the courthouse. That's only part of the things that we do. Courthouse security is incredibly important, but also is the service of domestic violence protective orders, so is the service of warrants, so is, you know, the other events that we're doing, so is traffic enforcement, and we get these things from going to community association meetings, right? Talking to the community and saying, what is it that are your issues, right? And I think you had brought up during the police hearing about an intersection that was problematic in your area. Had a community member put that in, we would have responded out there and not taken over what the police does, but enhanced and assisted them, because the sheriff's office is able to do that. And we all know that there's a police shortage, and we all know that public safety is not one agency's responsibility, it's everyone's responsibility, and so we would try to have assisted in that.
Thank you for bringing that up, but our first connect is with the Baltimore City Police Department, and that is one of their main responsibilities, and it's up to them to contact you as a second base in basically soliciting that help. Do you disagree with that?
I do. I wholeheartedly disagree with that process, that the sheriff is an independent agency, that I work for the community, right? I'm not going to go do a traffic initiative and interfere with the police department in any kind of way, but that would, that statement would be the equivalent of saying like the MTA police shouldn't do patrol, or that the Transportation Authority police shouldn't do patrol, or the state police shouldn't do patrol. We all work together in order to do that kind of stuff. Now, if you pick up the phone and call 911, right, it should be the police department that comes, right? Although if you pick up the phone and call 911, and we're doing an event or festival, we're going to get it, or you call 911, and it's in the downtown area around the courthouse, we're going to get that, and we're going to help each other and respond to those kind of things. So the sheriff's office isn't trying to be the police department, and it's, I don't think they're comparable. The only thing that's comparable is that we're both public safety, and we both have police authority. They have a mission that's funded by you to do a certain thing, and we have a mission. Our mission is court security, right, is one part, through the court security division, but then we also have an entirely different division, which is the deputy sheriff division, which has the statewide law enforcement.
Thank you for that, but you just referenced an accident that I talked about, and the first recourse is for the police department to respond, and if there should be, there should be a relationship if they need your help with situations specifically like that. And you, how, you can't just step in on your own. We're here, we have been talking about partnerships since day one, since we've had these sessions.
Right.
And it clearly seems like there's no partnerships. How, why...
Vice President, we're going to, I'm going to come back to you to finish your questions.
Thank you.
I do appreciate you. We're going to get to Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sheriff Kogan, I, first off, want to just start off by thanking you for stepping up and doing what we've been asking since we got on this council. We've been hearing administration after administration, both the mayor, council presidents over the years, say that we need all hands on deck for public safety, and we do, and you have stepped up and really taken initiative and done a lot more than has ever been done before, and we appreciate that, and the community appreciates that. One thing that I've heard in, across my district, is people get upset when they go down to an Orioles game, or they go down to a Ravens game, and they see that post officer from their neighborhood working at the game instead of working in the community. And I know that that has been an ongoing occurrence, that staffing has required that officers get drafted to go ahead and work that security detail, and it's taking away from public safety in our community and also taking, increasing response time. So the fact that you and your team are out there for all the Ravens games has really gone a long way, and also the public safety around the stadium has increased. It's better now than it ever has been before. You used to not be able to walk into a game without different illegal street vendors, without permits, bombarding you and not letting you walk into the stadium unless you purchase something that says, you know, profanities or other things on it, and now what we hear from people is they feel very safe going to their car, going to the games, and that's, you know, that's something that's very important, and I thank you for that. And also, thank you for the fact that in every neighborhood in my district, they value that when they call on the sheriff's office, the sheriff's office responds. And I see you guys at events all across the city and across my district, and all the communities appreciate that. I've never heard the sheriff's office say no to any community that's having an issue, and they value that. And the police department's great, I'm a big supporter of the police department, but they are short officers, and they're doing a great job at recruitment, but we need all hands on deck. And as you stated, the sheriff's office has the authority of police officers, your officers have gone through the academy, and so the fact that you're not being selfish and not just keeping them in the courthouse like they used to be really goes a long way to making our communities all safer. One other thing I want to say before I get into my question, and I've brought this up to multiple agencies, asked about the diversity within their agency, and I would say, going out on a limb, you're probably one of the most diverse agencies in the entire city, if not the most diverse agency. When you go through the courthouse, you see sheriffs that look like the population of Baltimore. Every, you see all different races, religions, ethnicities, you just, and that's really great that when people come and do their jury service, that they are, they're seeing that diversity and seeing that it's Baltimore City residents who are working in your department. And our economy also appreciates that, that you're keeping the money in Baltimore by having people who live here. So thank you for that. My first question is regarding your budget. I noticed, you know, many other budgets have increased a lot. I noticed that your budget has actually decreased by over a million dollars, and you've definitely taken on more and done a lot more over the course of this year. Why is your budget proposal a million less?
I can't answer that question.
Does this budget reflect the needs of your agency?
It does not.
Okay. So what is a proper amount for your agency to continue doing the services that you're doing, or do you need to be?
Yeah, well, so we saw what the differential was, right, with, and I think it would be not reasonable, responsible for me to come in and say that we got to right-size something right away, right? This problem is not the mayor's problem, it's not something that's the problem of the city council. It's just we're where we are right now, because for years, like, we added judiciary positions, and we didn't add court security positions on top of that. And so, like, now we've come to a different administration who's saying that we need to activate our office, right, and we need to follow the state law, and we need to make sure that for every judge, right, because if you look at our budget and we line item every judge, right, we don't have enough pins to cover that for court security, and I don't think anyone would think that's reasonable, and I don't think the state law intends for that to occur either. So to answer your question, I think that we have to have a reasonable discussion with the administration, right, and I think we have to have a reasonable discussion with the council, and we have to look at what the state law says, right, and we have to look at what the judiciary deems as necessary, and then we have to come up with something that we can do that will be fiscally responsible, right, in these budget times that we have. But I think that a cut to the budget like that, it just exacerbates everything, and it makes things worse, and so we would look for some form of restoration of that from the council in order to be truthful and honest about what we're doing and what we're spending, and don't do what I know that you've been talking about, is to come back for a budget supplemental, or to overspend in overtime, or someone to say, well, sheriff, you overspent your budget, right? And then I have to explain on the back end, yeah, that's because we asked for this, and we were underfunded on the front end for services that we have to provide. So I think that's the best answer I can, that I'm hopeful that this can be, we can still work this out.
Got you. Thank you. And my second question is regarding your slide about the body cameras. So with the state mandating you doing certain things, are they then providing any funding towards that, or are they requiring the local jurisdictions to cover that shortfall?
Well, the last thing I want to do is say I'm a Kerwin up here or anything like that, right? But really, like, when the state passes something, it is a mandate on local government. And so, like, we're required by law to have body cameras, and the sheriff's officer is required to be funded by the local jurisdictions, and this is all local jurisdictions. And so, you know, it's the same as BPD, right? So like, the state passed a law that says Baltimore Police Department has to have body cameras, and I believe they got funded, you know, for like 30 positions and all the body cameras and software and a review team, and, you know, we have the same obligations, but it's not reflected in our budget anywhere. And what I'm not going to do, and you're never going to see me do, is ignore the state law and just say, well, if the city didn't fund it, then I don't have to do it, or do something as serious as public trust and body cameras in a way that's not done responsibly and not done thoroughly. And so, we found to do that, but then that's why when people say, well, why is your budget over, why are you doing these things, right? It's because of that, because it's unfunded, and it needs to be funded.
Got you. And so, from the, you had mentioned that you're using revenues from drug forfeiture money, so do all these revenues that you're generating go back to your budget?
No, none of them go back to the budget.
Where do they go?
I don't know. They're general fund.
Got you. So just a committee request, if you can provide a list of all... So, uh, just a committee request, if you can provide a list of all revenues, um, that your agency generates. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilman Gray?
Thank you, Chair. Um, and just, I'll save my time with the pleasantries because I feel like everyone has already given you it. Um, you've showed up in our communities for events and so I'm, I'm appreciative of that. I want to talk about the cost of your fleet.
Sure.
So, um, this is just a simple question, this one is. Who maintains your agency fleet?
The, the two people. Um, we rent our vehicles, um, from NextCar and we also have, um, cars that come from Department of General Services of the City of Baltimore.
Perfect. Um, with historical spending trends by the sheriff's office on agency's, uh, fleet, including the acquisition, uh, in maintenance costs over the past few years. And cause I, cause I need the, you know, I'm, I need you to walk me through this. Um, can you tell us about instances of budget overruns or unexpected costs associated with fleet management or procurement of new vehicles? And what specific controls and oversight mechanisms are in place to prevent overspending on the new fleet in FY26? And what mech, and what metrics will, uh, will you track for adherence to the budget for vehicle acquisition and maintenance?
It's, it's a great question and I'm glad you brought that up. Um, so the way that this, that works at the sheriff's office, and I think it works in other agencies, but I'm just going to talk about what we know, is that, uh, we buy vehicles, they get put into the fleet and then we pay a rental, uh, fee on that for them to be replaced every five years. Um, that's the way it's supposed to happen. Um, and in the sheriff's office, when I came into office, we had cars that were like 2014s that had been almost triple paid on, on that. Um, and we had older vehicles. And we were approached by the Department of General Services who advised us that we could get 22 vehicles under the master lease to replace the vehicles that we have. Um, and during those time period, we turned in 22 cars that had lights and sirens and, uh, were outfitted, is what they call it, marked and outfitted. And we were expecting to get, um, without any issues, uh, 22 vehicles backed that were outfitted and marked and, and done whatnot. And what we found was, is that that 22 vehicles, like also, I think this happened in the fire department and the police department, they didn't count the outfitting in that. And so even though, uh, we could have 22 vehicles, 22 vehicles isn't any good at the sheriff's office if they don't have a prisoner cage in them, if they don't have a light in them, lights and sirens in them, if they don't have the, uh, the instrumentation that we need. And so it looks like citywide, there was an overrun in that. Um, and that was an issue I believe that the Department of General Services has taken ownership of. Um, in knowing that though, um, we pay more close attention to, uh, the needs of our, our fleet, even though right now I'm very happy with the size of our fleet. And since we've upgraded in that way, we don't really, we're not really expecting those issues to occur other than we have some older vehicles that at some point will need to be replaced. And when they are, I think unfortunately, even though the Department of General Services is the one who runs this, we're going to have to ask them, is the price that we're paying like the end price? Or is there all other kinds of things that are involved that you're not advising us on the front end?
Okay, I'll, I'll, I want to, I'll address that. First, can I, um, make a committee request?
Chairman?
Chairwoman, sorry.
Of course, everybody else is.
Thank you. Uh, I would like to make a committee request. Um, could you provide with, uh, uh, for us a complete list of your fleet inventory? And including that list, how many times the inventory was utilized explicitly for calls for service? Um, additionally, I would like to include how many of our sheriffs have taken home vehicles?
Right.
And of those vehicles, how many of them live in Baltimore city? And what is the furthest away someone with a take-home vehicle lives? And could we have that by Friday?
Yes.
Perfect. Um, for my, uh, next question, um, I want to just talk a little bit more about overtime. FY26, your agency outspent its budget by 4.56 million dollars, to which it's been reported that multiple reports indicate that the sheriff's deputies were, uh, significantly overpaid in the millions. And the IGs reported that it was confirmed that there was improper use of city funds and a deliberate abuse of the detailed designation. With that said, what systems have you put in place to track overtime requests to monitor actual overtime expenditures against the budget amount? And how will any of these deviations be swiftly addressed, prevent future overspending?
Yeah, so, um, to address that directly, it's in arbitration right now, this, this discussion. Um, and, um, I would love to talk about this at, at great length, um, but cannot do so because of that. Um, however, right, um, we can say that, uh, we disagree with that conclusion, right? Um, not that the deputies were overpaid because they were overpaid through a programmatic error in workday, which is maintained not by the sheriff's office, but as you know, by the city of Baltimore, it was a miscalculation. So while we're not disputing that, there is a significant dispute, a legal dispute right now in arbitration on whether or not, um, the, uh, trigger from that was, was allowable or not allowable, right? Under the conditions that it was done. And so, you know, once that, that finding comes out, I'm sure it will be public, right? And we can discuss it more, but none of that, um, occurred, that occurred in 2022 and 2023, I believe. Okay, before that, right? Um, that, um, part of the grievance is that even though the labor contract specifies that that deputies are do that, what we call a $15 an hour bonus, right? Even though they're do that and it's in the labor contract, that has not been paid since then, right? Um, and so, um, the answer to your question is, the control is that the deputies aren't able to put in for that because, uh, the city doesn't allow them to put in for that, even though it's in the labor contract, which is what the grievance is about.
Yeah, um, and so this entire week, from Wednesday to Wednesday, um, I'm sorry, I have to just be blunt. I feel like I'm living in Bizarro Land right now.
Sure.
I've continuously heard each day about supplemental and the fact that we don't want supplemental requests to come in. Um, no matter how great of a job an agency has done, we still want you to rein in your overtime.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when DOT by law has to, uh, comply with the ADA, they didn't blow through their budget to fix every sidewalk. They, if they didn't have the money, they would, their reason would be, we don't have the money. Um, when we had old fleet from DPW and they pleaded about this for years, they didn't just go out and buy a new fleet. They went through the proper protocols.
Correct.
I am asking you, go through the proper protocols. You cannot come back here next year, sir, with all due respect. And I appreciate everything you do for communities, but I just have to keep it consistent because I've been silent on this. I understand that folks are going to want to do the best to make sure that they have the best outcome for the citizens. But what happened last year can't happen again. You cannot do that. You cannot just go and blow a budget just because you think it's right because the state law says it, federal law mandates that we're supposed to have every sidewalk fixed. DOT did not blow the budget to do it. And so I am asking you to just respect the order of process. I know it's difficult. When you do that, we will be here to fight for you because I believe that you do a lot of great work. But there's no defense for what you did and I'm hoping that you guys just do better. Thank you.
Members. Words matter. As we are asking questions, um, going forward, even words matter. And I want us to be intentional about the questions that we're putting forward as well as, um, our comments. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Sheriff, can you, uh, describe the, uh, new neighborhood services unit that, um, the state and you worked on? What they'll be doing and it's not in the budget, so how is it going to be paid for? What's the staffing going to be? Um, is it, well, how is that going to work?
So, uh, we'll start out by saying that a, a state law was passed, right? Uh, to create a neighborhood services unit within the sheriff's office of Baltimore city. Um, and, uh, there's some funding mechanisms that are in the bill, um, that, uh, the, um, President of the Senate, uh, I think, uh, put in some amendments to talk about, um, language about sheriff fees that are, uh, being collected could be used to fund it. And also, uh, remittance from the liquor board from, uh, licensing fees, I think, can be used to, uh, is that correct? Can be used to fund it. Um, but the ne- neighborhood services unit will be, uh, based on city funding that will come, I guess, from this body and also from the administration to decide how you want to fund it. I know that the, uh, the city submitted a fiscal note, uh, associated with that bill that said it would require 10 positions, uh, to do this. Um, and the state passed that, that bill knowing what the city's fiscal note was. Um, so maybe that can be a guide that we can look at. Um, but until we meet with the liquor board and put an MOU together to decide what our duties and responsibilities are going to be, we really don't have the answer to your question. I can tell you what I'd like it to be and what I'd like, I envision that to be. And that would be, uh, all of us in all of our neighborhoods have a problem, uh, liquor establishment. And we also have problems with people selling liquor to juveniles outside, right? Um, and actually, uh, you know, liquor inspectors, as great a job as they do, are not law enforcement, right? Um, and so they can't address that. And so I think the purpose would be for the sheriff's office that is law enforcement to be able to, uh, enforce that in, in, in a way. Also, we have, uh, these vacancies that I talked about, right? You know, we would, again, if court security was right-sized and we didn't have deputy sheriffs who are supposed to do deputy sheriff work in court, uh, instead of a special police officer, a court security officer, then we would be able to handle that with, uh, I think, minimum fiscal impact for additional people.
And Councilwoman Ramos, uh, if I, if I could just expand on the, the sheriff. Um, so the liquor fees that were identified in that legislation, that's a general fund revenue source. And so if, um, there was a decision, if there was a decision to utilize that revenue for a new cost, um, you know, that's going to be pulling general fund revenue from something else that it's supporting to this new cost. It still will have to be accommodated in the overall budget package. Uh, the, um, the, the sheriff mentioned the fiscal note that we submitted. We estimated the cost of the proposal to be at 1.1 million dollars. That was a, a rough estimate. We were looking at the staffing level within the liquor board where, for the similar function that they provide and assuming that there would be a similar structure within the sheriff's office. As we move to consider how to implement this, I think we could, we will certainly work to understand the staffing model and, and refine that number based off of, um, you know, any sort of proposal that the sheriff's off, office wants to put forward.
A, a, and if I might just continue, sort of to go to, uh, your colleague, uh, who, who spoke about process, right? Really that's, we stand ready to help, right? Um, and, and that's what I think the theme of what I'm saying is, and I, and I think everyone's acknowledging that the sheriff's office has the authority to help. We stand ready to help and how we decide to allow us or not allow us to do that. Some of that is within the state law, but some of it is at discretion of the, uh, of, of, a lot of it is in the discretion of the city. So, you know, that, that's going to have to be determined.
Well, I, I mean, I think that the, the neighborhood services unit, as I understand it, um, is going to be helpful to us. We all have, uh, those, uh, challenges in our district with, uh, problem liquor establishment or an establishment that is illegal. And so the liquor board definitely needs that assistance and our communities need that assistance. I don't, I don't think anybody's challenging that at all. Um, I'm glad that, uh, Director Larson stepped in because I was going to be, I was a little confused as to how the state could say that the funding that they pull in could go directly to them when we would still have to either create a special fund or do a charter amendment to move that money around or to have a non-lapsing fund to be able to, to do that. So we, there's still some logistics there that I think if that's the intent, would have to actually be worked out. Um, and so I don't, even though the bill gets enacted in October, all of these things aren't worked out nor is this budgeted right at the moment. So, um, that, so it won't necessarily be up and running? Nina, do you want to jump in?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, straighten out. Sorry, Nina Thamelis, Director of Government Relations for Mayor Scott. Um, the legislation that was passed in Annapolis is pass session HB 1293. Um, we had submitted our fiscal note. Um, the sheriff's office testimony stated that it would not cost the state, the sheriff's office, or the city any money and that they believe that the sources of funding that already exist could cover the cost of it. Um, we have not discussed and were not approached to include funding for the neighborhood services unit in the budget. Um, and so based upon the, uh, testimony and attestation of the sheriff's office in, um, hearings that it would not cost anything additional, we did not budget it in. Um, and the Senate delegation expressly added the amendment that they did and passed it out of delegation with the understanding that it wouldn't, uh, impose any additional costs on the city.
Um, it sounds like a lot of these things still need to be worked out. Um, because I, I think, again, I think it's going to be a good service. Um, I think if something like, I'm, I'm sure that the, um, delegation had some conversations with us. Um, I don't believe I was part of those, but, um, that's, and that's okay. Uh, but hopefully we can work this out and I'm happy to be a part of the conversations if that's helpful. Um, but it sounds like if it's unbudgeted at the moment and you're going to need to be doing these, it makes sense to really work on the hiring piece to be able to make sure that you're filling those vacancies to be able to do this additional work. Um, I guess related to that, is the vacancies only on the court side or it's also on the deputy side?
No, it's on the deputy side, right? Um, uh,
So the court is completely full, it's the deputy side that's vacant?
Well, so the court has judges that require court security pins that don't exist. And then the deputy side has vacancies because of uncompetitive salary.
Mm-hmm. So you've got, you don't have, there's certain pins that don't exist.
Correct.
That you still have to fill that work.
Correct.
And so the deputies have to go in and fill that work, even though you've still got people, that you still got pins unfilled on the deputy side?
Correct.
Okay.
Which again goes back to the point, like, if, if we didn't have that, we would probably, to her point as well, have staffing in order to do that. Um, and, and it wouldn't require funding. Um, but, but then couple that with a, a cut in funding, right? Uh, vacancies and then it becomes even more problematic to implement.
Uh, right, well, okay. So I think that it sounds like we've still got to work all of this out and that there needs to be still a memorandum with the liquor board.
Correct.
Um, but also some conversations with our Senate delegation in particular, just because that's who's we're dealing with here. Um, and, and some of us. So, um, I'm happy to be a part of those conversations if, if needed. And I appreciate trying to get through the, this, this piece of it. Um, thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Parker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, and thank you Sheriff Kogan for being with us tonight. Um, my question had to do, I, I was glad you brought up, and I know, uh, I know you anticipated it because such has been a, been a big deal, um, about the, um, the eviction side of things, especially the, the wrongful detainer. With the, uh, has is, I, I've seen in my district, I think my colleagues, at least in preliminary conversation with them, have seen in their districts kind of the rise of what I describe as, uh, as, as professional squatters as opposed to, uh, transient squatters, unhoused persons who are looking for a, a safe, secure, warm place for the night and things like that. Um, and who regularly kind of get roused out or moved along with limited intervention by law enforcement or anyone else. And folks who are coming with, um, uh, with fake leases, uh, with, uh, U-Hauls full of furniture in the middle of the night, uh, who have changed the locks on the doors, um, uh, who have swapped BGE into their name and therefore have set themselves up to only be removed with the wrongful detainer process. I noticed the numbers you lifted up there, uh, 823 and then 174 evicted present, 273 evicted not present, which leaves about, uh, half of the cases without a resolution. So just a few questions there. The remaining half of those cases that are in that wrongful detainer total but weren't in an eviction, what were the potential, help us imagine what those potential outcomes were? And also that 823, because again, my sense, at least in the district, is that it's significantly increased, at least the number, not, not necessarily squatting overall, but the number of squatting incidents that require a wrongful detainer because they're the way I described them. How does that 823 compare to previous years? Do you see this as an increasing problem? Do you have any data behind that?
It, it is an increase. It's a significant increase. Um, I think we had one month where we had 100 wrongful detainers in one month. Um, and so to envision like where, where that number, the differential from the ones we do and the ones we don't do, unfortunately, one of the reasons why people engage in this behavior is because they extort the landlord to move, right? Um, and so in that number is somebody who didn't want to go through the court process and was unable to get, uh, law enforcement to remove the person through a criminal process. Um, and then they ended up, you know, paying for the person to get out of there, right? Um, now, one of the things that I saw in the General Assembly this year is they passed a a bill that's going to address this somewhat by, and it puts a, an additional burden on my office, um, because there's an expedited timeline to hear these wrongful detainer cases so they don't languish. And then there's an expedited timeline for me to serve the, uh, the warrants to get people out. Um, I think if a case goes to circuit court, it gets, we have to do it immediately following the court case. We have to go serve, that's what the state law says, and I believe it's five days afterwards in order to do that. Um, so the people who are suffering from this are going to see some of it become less profitable because people aren't going to be able to hold the house without, um, the court acting, um, for thirty, forty, fifty days, sometimes two months, right? That, 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 that period is problematic. And we've seen cases, again, where someone's going to go to settlement on their house, right? And they walk in and there's someone who shows them a lease and, and it's, it's like, it, it, the community is just not accepting of that. Um, and so there's a court process where it goes through due process and, and not me in law enforcement, but a judge reviews the facts, right? And makes a judicial determination and then issues an order to the sheriff. And we, we, we received eight hundred of those, which is a significant amount, because you have to also imagine how many people didn't go through that process that were the victimized in this way. But I want to say there is a flip side to it and, and we need to bear this in mind because we need to be human beings about things. I've seen people who've been, uh, defrauded, right? And someone rented them a house that didn't belong to them, um, and now they find themselves in this situation. So we have to make sure, like, when we look at these things, that they're human beings associated with every eviction. Every eviction should be ruled on by a judge and we should, we should respect people's basic humanity. Um, so, you know, we have squatters who are engaged in a course of conduct which is criminal and fraudulent and is harming the community, but we also have fraudsters who are trying to, uh, to defraud people as well. And I think, um, you know, the General Assembly is sort of there on it. We're going to make it quicker, get in front of a judge quicker, and so people who would profit by staying in that house like that have less of an incentive to do that. Um, and, and so I hope I'm not anticipating a question, but that's.
No, I, I really appreciate that. And, and you know, I want to thank you all in your office. Um, we had a situation in Highland Sound which took about seven months to resolve, right? Uh, two different wrongful detainer processes because the first, the first property owner gave up and sold it to somebody else and said, hey, good luck, you know, you try to get them out, right? And then we started over again with the entire court process. Um, but when it came time for action and response to this from the Sheriff's Department, you, you all were there and so we, the, the community noticed that and we really appreciated it.
Thank you.
A formal request then, just on the numbers, I'd, I'd love to see five years worth of just that, that overall number, that wrong, actually all three of those, because you gave them all. So five years worth of total wrongful detainer, evicted present, um, and evicted not present, just so we have some sense of that.
If, if I can just caveat that, um, the sheriff became sheriff in 2022 and the records weren't necessarily the way that they're kept now. So if you could let us give you the totals since, you know, we have control.
Whatever you could provide, I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilman.
Make that request. Um, you mentioned, and I really appreciate Sheriff, your, your note about people who are being defrauded, um, by, uh, by folks pretending to be on one level landlords or property owners. I think you said in your initial presentation that you were, that your office was doing some investigative work around trying to hold those folks accountable. Say a little bit more about that side of it, because I, I haven't, I've, I've heard a lot of people throwing up their hands, but you were saying that there's action to take.
So, so one of the things that we're doing now, um, through implementation of technology is that we have, um, and, and you remember, we had no technology at the sheriff's office. I'm the first sheriff who ever had a computer, believe it or not, right? Um, and so, you know, what we've done is we've, we now have records where we identify who the occupant was, and so we can cross-check them to see if this is a course of conduct, where that didn't exist before. Um, and it's, it's, you know, we had to build all kinds of things in order to get to that. Um, the, the next piece of that is it's incredibly difficult to initiate a criminal case against, uh, someone like that because, um, of, and, and the police department has found this through the law department, and we've gotten advice from the Attorney General's Office that, you know, it, it, it would be, um, very, very problematic for law enforcement to do a criminal case against somebody and then find out later that they actually had a lawful right to be in the premises and would put us at such a high liability, um, that they are advising us not to do that. And so that's why I say it really does have to go to a judge unless, unless you actually see the person breaking in and you have the person there.
Right, I, no, and I really appreciate that. Sorry, what I, what I meant to ask about was the people who are, and so like I've seen folks, um, on social media.
Right.
Advertising.
Got it.
Properties that don't belong to them, but that they can break into, change the locks and say, you know, give me, give me fifteen hundred dollars and the place is yours. Um, have we, your office or, I mean, perhaps the BPD as well, I mean, it's criminal conduct anybody can investigate, but have you all been trying to, 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 to track down those bad actors and have some accountability?
The, the answer is yes, right? Um, I, I can tell you that law enforcement, both Baltimore Police Department, us and other law enforcement and, and other entities in, in, in the law enforcement are very aware of these cases, that, um, we receive the calls probably like just you did and the screenshots of, uh, like you did of, uh, of people who are advertising to sell people these things. Um, and, you know, I can't really speak about investigations as they're ongoing.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sheriff, good to see you.
Good to see you as well.
Always a pleasure. I wanted first, thank you. Um, you know, I, I, I think we, we all has a, have a really tough job. Um, you especially have a very tough job. Um, but you are always willing to help. Um, if we are having issues with traffic enforcement in our, in our districts, and we know the police department may not be able to serve in that capacity because they're often responding to calls for service, you're happy to, to figure out a way to get some enforcement in our districts and I certainly appreciate that. Um, if it's a matter of event enforcement or security at events, you've also been willing to step up. And I, I just want to say, um, I really, I really appreciate you. Um, you, you, you've come into the role with a problem solver attitude and I think, you know, for me, I really just, I want to make sure we do good by the city. And as I get complaints, I'm always trying to figure out how to resolve those problems. And sometimes our police department doesn't have the capacity to do that. And fortunately, sometimes you're able to step up and provide that support and I can tell you it means a lot to me. Um, and I would probably say a number of the members on this council would agree with that. So I just, you know, putting everything else aside, appreciate you for that. I think it's really important that, um, I'd say that. Um, so we, we talked about a lot. I don't want to belabor you with, with, um, any questions, so I want to keep it simple. Um, can you tell me what your biggest problem is right now and how you see this budget addressing or, um, fixing that problem, if, if at all?
So, so I think that the biggest issue that we have right now in the budget is that the Court Security Division isn't funded to do the functions that the Courts of, yeah, excuse me, that the Court Security Division is supposed to handle. Um, you know, each, each judge should have a court security officer. We should have a pin for each judge, a pin for each magistrate. Um, again, we have the manpower hours of the doors down to, you know, it takes three people and the courts open this many days of the week and this is how long they're there, right? Um, I mean, all of it is, I don't think I could be any more transparent, um, than what we laid it out. Like, thi- this is what this door costs, this is what this door costs, this is what each judge costs, this is the room number that each judge is in, this is the room number that each magistrate is in, and these are the, uh, the fundings that we have that either matches or doesn't match with that, um, which then requires us to go into another service to come backfill into that, which then impacts, um, what you just said and things like the Neighborhood Services Unit. Um, but even, you know, if you want to look back on like what people would consider the court functions, warrant service, domestic violence service, uh, summons and process service, evictions or foreclosures, the time that we can spend on things. Um, and so, you know, right sizing that after years of, of adding judicial positions and, and not adding funding for that, I think we're in a, a bad place right now for my office by backfilling that. Then the next thing really is the salaries of the, uh, of the deputy sheriffs, that we have to come to some, um, reasonable, um, whether it matches another sheriff's office that's doing similar work or where, where it's some percentage about the law enforcement authority or it's like, uh, you know, where, you know, if you want to say, well, the police should make this and the sheriff should make that, right? How are we making that determination, right? But, you know, it's got to be competitive so that when the police department's out in Baltimore and they're, they have advertisements everywhere and it's the same pool that we're going for, because it is the same pool, same qualifications by state law, exact same training, we go to the police academy, right? Um, you know, whether or not we, we're, we're compensating them so we can be competitive, so we can fill the vacancies, so we can do more, and then we can be responsible and follow the process and stuff like that. Again, you know, I don't want to go back to the, uh, the IG report, right? Uh, but we can, right? The reason that, um, the deputies were given that incentive, right, is because, um, one, it was lawful for me to do it because I talked to the Attorney General, but the other reason was, is because we were losing people, right? I think we had lost six people, um, in, in two weeks, right? Um, and if that happens, as the sheriff, I have to use what I consider lawful methods in order to make sure my people are paid, so I have enough staff to cover the courts and do my mandated duties and responsibilities and, and do what needs to be done. Like, I have to do that. And if I can't figure that out, um, then, then we, we really have an issue, um, particularly since I'm not in control of what I pay them. Um, that has to go through the, like, I can't, I can't say, let me cut back in my budget and move that money to pay the deputies. I tried to do that and was stopped from doing that, right? Um, you know, I said, here's eight hundred thousand dollars we have in the budget, let's freeze it and move it into salaries for the deputies, and was told I'm not allowed to do that. It's got to go, uh, through a bargaining process, right? Um, and we're in that bargaining process and I'm comfortable, hopefully, that will happen. But in the meanwhile, right, um, we have a job to do, right? And, and I take my job very, very, very seriously. Um, you know, protection of the judiciary as an independent branch of government and especially today when we have, you know, the presidential administration, you know, challenging the judiciary and we see judicial threats up, um, you know, and, and I've seen judicial threats up, um, and the rule of law is being challenged. You know, the fact that the sheriff protects the courts, right? That's a, that's a huge issue. Um, and again, I take that very, very seriously. Um, you know, I take protecting people in Baltimore very seriously. I take when a community member picks up the phone and asks for help, just like you talked about, hey, I need relief here, right? Um, or like a, a council person will pick up and say, hey, I'm having a problem getting this thing done, right? You know, uh, yes, I'll help you, right? Um, not in an irresponsible way, right? And, and I take, I take the point, right? But in, in a way that if I have the ability to assist, I'm always going to try to help all the community. And I, I take that very, very seriously.
I appreciate that. And, uh, for those two, um, issues, that being court security not being fully supported and for the gap in salaries for de, um, deputy sheriffs, uh, it sounds like that's something that's got to go through, uh, bargaining and so we'll see that at some point later on that line. But for the first, that being court security, what is the security? Security? What is the gap there? What's the number?
So I don't want to, I, I can put this, there's a slide on it. I think it's about six million dollar gap right there, right? Just, just in the salaries of what it, what it takes to run the Court Security Division. And again, if we look at nineteen, uh, seventy-something when the Court Security Division was created and we look at how many pins there were, there were three court security officers for every judge, right? Now there's point eight court security officers for every judge, right? Um, and so like the math doesn't add up, right? Um, and again, I want to be respectful to the council and come here and be totally truthful and honest and say the math doesn't add up in our budget, right? Um, and, and that's the cause of a lot of problems.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Councilman Blanchard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sheriff, thank you and thanks for, um, all the, uh, both operational support and, uh, sort of insights and expertise you, you've provided in my first five or so months in office. Um, the, uh, my colleague from the first district was talking about this whole professional squatter situation and I'm glad to hear that there are some proactive efforts against that, um, very much so. Um, I also, I want to talk about kind of the other end of the spectrum with evictions. So, uh, city had roughly, I think, seven, seven thousand five hundred evictions last year. And, uh, I know that, I can't remember if it was you as the council president, but someone talked about the, the work pairing up deputies with social workers and whatnot. Um, obviously we will have to have some evictions, that's a necessary part of society. We also want to, it's good for everyone, particularly the families being evicted, to prevent that when it's feasible. Can you talk about what you've done, uh, as well as, you know, what future things could be done to, to prevent, uh, evictions?
Yeah, that's a great question, um, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about that. Uh, so one of the things that like was super important to me, uh, when I came into office was that we stopped this like fifteen-minute eviction thing. And so before I came into office, the, the deputy sheriff's role was to go to the house, say, do you have the money? And if the answer was no, then to put the person out and then move on to their next eviction. Um, and, you know, uh, while, and I've said this before, while I believe, um, in, in due process of law, right? And then that you have to have, um, you have to have an eviction process and there are a lot of good landlords out there that are doing right, we also have to remember that every single person that's evicted is a person, right? Who's done nothing wrong but not be able to, uh, financially afford something, right? And they have children, right? And, uh, and the families, and it dramatically impacts, you know, as you know, all kinds of things like, um, you know, delinquency, housing instability has a huge, you know, impact on people, um, and, and, and criminality, um, later in life and, you know, uh, stability and income.
There's a million reasons why.
And so one of the things that we did is we, um, we, we stopped that, right? And we, um, we made sure that we met with the judiciary and we made sure that the, um, time that people get to receive notice, um, was done, so that they get enough time to get notice. And there were some issues with some, the summary ejectment notice, which is the first thing that happens. The mail would not arrive at the house, but the person would be evicted, right? And part of it is that they have to receive the mail. So they weren't receiving notice or that they would get a notice on Thursday to be in court on Friday to hear an eviction case, right? Um, and so we worked well with the judiciary and we got it, um, so that they get the actual time that they need. And if we received summary ejectment notices that didn't give the person enough time to have due process and notice, that we were able to send that back to them and let them know, hey, you have to reissue this and give them enough time. Um, the other thing that we did is we were super transparent and we built into our, our system when we receive things, uh, when the landlord calls, when we schedule things, um, and, uh, when they're going to be done. Um, and it's public facing and so you don't have to call anybody. The, the, the tenant knows if they have their case number, how to research that on our website and see exactly when their eviction is done. And also this was something I think that, uh, Councilwoman Ramos put out, that she wanted to make sure that when people call the sheriff's office, we tell them their eviction date so they know and so they have notice. Um, and so we're not, you know, we're not, um, having problems with that. Then we implemented our social work program and really what that is, is it's a service connection program, because we're not doing, like, what would you consider, like, we're not becoming a case manager for an individual, right? Because that will require something different. But what we've done is we've worked with all the partners that are out there, both private and, and public, right? And try to connect people with services as quickly as possible, um, in order to avoid evictions. The, the other thing that we've done is, and I've done this for some of the people in the council, if there's a particular case where someone is disabled or there's something problematic, we're able to be flexible in when we schedule the eviction. It's not set in stone. It used to be, once the eviction's done, it's set in stone and that's when it's going to happen. Sometimes, again, every case is different and we have to listen to everyone and we have to hear what it is and we have to understand that it's not the same if you have like three disabled children that have autism and they're going to get, uh, moved and it's going to cause them mental health distress and we need to do that in, in a way. Or like this is someone who's lived in the house for, uh, fifty years and they need another two days to get the moving truck, right? That kind of stuff we listen to and we engage in that. We also send a lot of cases back to court, um, and there's a lot of training in reference to that. So, um, you know, when a, uh, a deputy sheriff comes on the scene and there's a dispute, So, you know, when a deputy sheriff comes on the scene and there's a dispute, they don't try to settle it right there and be a street judge, they refer it back to the court and get it done. So those are just some of the things, I could really go on and on and discuss it at length. But we've done a lot to try to put a human centered thing on there, both for the good landlords that need their property back, but also for the, for the tenants who may be struggling and we need to help them because again, that's what we should be doing.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, I should say one more thing. School notification. So when someone's evicted and we know that there's a child there or going to be scheduled for eviction, we send that to North Avenue and I think that's really important as well.
And that, what does that do?
That that child has been evicted, right? So that they're aware of that.
Oh, so that the.
So they can provide services within the school.
Yeah, okay. And then sort of, I guess, outside of your, that's within your purview, but obviously you've got a unique perspective on, on the eviction process and for all the reasons that we want to do everything we can to prevent evictions, if you could go kind of out of your lane for a second, say, you know, what's, what's one thing that could meaningfully reduce evictions in the city? It would be.
Well, I would like you to, if you wouldn't mind, request from me, right, so I can distribute it to you, I'm going to do it anyway, right? Because I think it's important. All the evictions that occurred in the city of Baltimore for under three hundred dollars, right? Because it's a significant amount. And before we started keeping statistics, we wouldn't have known that information. But now we know, right? And so the question really is, it's a housing question and it's not for me to answer, it's for me to provide you the information. Does it really make sense to evict somebody for three hundred dollars, right? Or is it, is, should there be something set up that, that tries to prevent that, right? Like I don't want to get too far into it because one of my roles is to be impartial, but I will, I will say, right, we see some really low dollar eviction amounts and it probably costs more for the deputy salaries to go out and do it and all the processing than it does for the actual eviction. And most good landlords that I know, they're not interested in evicting people, they're interested in having their rent paid, right? And so this is not an anti-landlord thing to say, to say that we may be doing a disservice to hundreds of people a year by not providing some kind of a rental assistance where some low dollar people who are struggling would be able to stay housed and then who have families would be able to stay housed. And so, you know, that, again, that's, that's out of my lane, right? And that's sort of me talking as a city resident based on the experience that I have, but also as the sheriff, because I don't want to, that's really not my role to influence that.
I am, I am happy to make, happy to make that committee request. Madam Chair, I would like to make an official request for, but to expand on it slightly, I'd like to know the, the number of, within the last two fiscal years, the number of evictions for under three hundred dollars, under a thousand dollars, and then just the, I guess, the average amount owed per eviction.
Yeah, and I think we could also add, right? Can we also add by councilmatic district where evictions are occurring? We can give you that as well, right? So you can, you can look and see what's happening. And again, this is something that wouldn't have been possible before, right?[1759.83]